Oh.
Yeah.
Oh.
We'll call into order.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The school board meeting February eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Roll call please.
Mr. Avia?
Here.
Ms. Redonia?
Here.
Ms. Steckety?
Here.
Mr. Maron?
Here.
Ms. Conover?
Here.
Ms. Hoover?
Here.
Ms. Coyle?
And at this time, we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God and a physical with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll appear to enter into closed session. I ask for a motion to enter into closed session for personnel issues.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
So at this time, we'll enter into a closed session, but just to let our audience and the public know that we'll return from that time at between six thirty and seven. At that time, we'll start. I must inform everyone that masks are required at this meeting and in this building, and so that everyone present must wear a mask, covering the nose and mouth.
And that's just not because of the school meeting, but this is the bill of charter, and the bill of charter requires masks.
Yeah, you can stay here. We go into the room.
We're reentirening into open session of our school board meeting. We will continue with our agenda with approval of minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 25, 2022 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the January 25, 2022 regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we will move along to our public comment. Before I read the guidelines, I'd like to point out and thank everyone for coming to present and speak. We do ask that everyone follow the protocols of the village and the school district to wear your mask properly and keep those in place. We, if we are unable, people cannot comply with that, we will take a pause and give you time to do that, but if, again, people still, a person still opposes that, then we'll have to take a pause and adjourn the meeting. And we want to continue and proceed with our business of the day. Moving along to public comment. Public comment is a time for the community to address the board with comments and questions. Each community member addressing the board has five minutes. We will try to give you a heads up if you're approaching that five minutes, basically to give other people time to also speak. Once you have been notified your time is up, kindly step away from the podium. Public comment for, will be for 30 minutes with no more than each subject lasting 20 minutes. Please understand this is not an engagement time. The board will consider your comments and its decisions. For those comments or questions requiring a follow-up response, the board president or superintendent will follow up. I'll also state that as we approach that 30 minutes time, again to respect the business of the board, if there's still people that need to speak, we have a second part in our agenda that opens up for public comment again. So we will try to include the rest of speakers if they didn't get a chance to speak at this present time. So with that, I know we haven't ordered, but I'm going to proceed with Veronica Barrett as our first speaker.
Hi, I'm Veronica Barrett. I'm three. I know I'm only 10 years old, but I know many reasons why we shouldn't be wearing masks. One reason, masks are just making us sick. Many people are making us, many people think that they are making us healthy, but they're actually not. Reason two, masks are not constitutional. Reason three, my mom has gone to teach at her school and she has seen many kids with mold in their masks and had to throw them away. My last reason is there is many times I've gone to school and I've gotten sweaty and hot, so my head starts to hurt, and that's why I think we should not wear masks. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Veronica.
Thank you.
Next we have Whitney Rogers.
Good evening, CUSD 201 board members. My name is Whitney Rogers, and I have come to you this evening to convey and express what is currently taking place within our school district. As we are all aware, this past school year has presented many challenges that most of us wouldn't have chosen to endure voluntarily. I know that my family has endured a lot, as I am sure that many parents along with staff and administrators have as well. The mask mandates is and has been a huge concern for a while now. I'm not going to get into the logistics, statistics, or the numbers of what the masks may or may not be preventing. What I am going to discuss is the option for parents to have a choice. I am not anti-mask, anti-vax, or anti-anything for that matter. What I am is pro. I am pro-choice for individuals, including our children and staff, not being segregated nor discriminated against due to a choice that was made based off of what was best suitable for them. As a parent and community member, along with others who has children within this district, it is our responsibility in exerting due diligence in governing over those who are our children. We have been deemed responsible for in making sure that the most appropriate decisions are being and have been made. These mask mandates are no exception. Parents and students are allowed to choose. Parents being able to make a choice on behalf of their child or children if needed as to whether or not they should be worn is no different than any other parental choice that has to be made. Our children's personal freedoms and human rights are being infringed upon and constantly violated in such a blatant matter. Mr. Carey, as our district superintendent, you have complete sovereign authority to impose that CUSD 201 be mask optional. Instead, you have chosen to utilize your sovereign authority to keep our children masked while violating their human rights in accordance to an illegal, an illegal mandate that Governor Pritzker implemented last year. These mandates were created and implemented to be utilized as tools to create modern-day segregation and discrimination. Our children and students are currently experiencing this as an alarm, at an alarming rate, and it is causing various forms of trauma. What is it going to take to say enough is enough? I ask that you utilize your sovereign authority, as I have been advising you to do so since the start of the school year, to immediately switch our CUSD 201 schools over to mask optional. Otherwise, the effects that these masks is having on our children will weigh on your conscience, not ours.
Before we move on, I'll state this again, in this building and in this meeting, we have protocol and mandate to wear a mask. So everyone that's here and present, even outside those doors, must wear a mask or will have to adjourn. If the board's in favor, we can take a five-minute break while people have a chance to gather masks or run, get to their car to get masks. If you're all in favor, you can say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? We'll take a five-minute break. We'll take a five-minute break. So that we can move on and give everyone a chance to speak, and we can start our time again. I have Joanna Dubiel.
Good evening, Mr. Carey and board members. My name is Joanna Dubiel, and I am the parent of three kids in the district. I am here today to ask you to overturn the mask mandate that our district, school district, still have in place and make masks optional in all CUSD 201 schools for all kids, teachers, staff, and staff as soon as possible. As you all know, last Friday, Judge Grisham granted a temporary restraining order that reduced schools' ability to require masks and vaccinations. It also voided emergency rules from the Illinois State Board of Education and from the Illinois Department of Public Health. Even though CUSD 201 is not listed in a lawsuit and TRO from enforcement perspective does not apply to CUSD 201, the judge stated enforcement of these masking exclusion rules without due process is illegal and all schools should govern themselves accordingly. Therefore, I ask you to stop enforcing masking and exclusion immediately. If you choose to continue to do this voluntarily, what you're doing is wrong and illegal. I ask you to do the right thing and make masks optional in our district. Thank you for your attention and for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Julie Williams.
My name is Julie Williams. I live in Westmont, Illinois, and my child goes to Westmont Junior High. This is my first time ever having to attend a board meeting, and I have three children, never been through this before. At the beginning of this today, I watched everyone stand up and pledge allegiance to the flag. How ironic, because we are a constitutional republic. However, we're being infringed upon every single day. Marxism has one foot in the door, and you all are allowing it to happen, whether you understand it or not. The judge downstate did make that ruling on Friday, and although District 201 are not plaintiffs, she made it statewide. You need to make the mandates gone. Reverse it, make it optional. There are other districts in the area and further away from us. They were not plaintiffs, but they have made masks optional. And I don't understand why District 201 is refusing to do so. You need to set aside your personal beliefs, your personal politics, and understand that we are Americans first and foremost. I am third-generation American. This is very hard for me because every day I feel like I'm in a time warp and I'm in 1930. It's disgusting. Mandate required and comply are ugly words. Optional and choice are beautiful words, and that's our God-giving freedom as Americans, free men and free women. And if you remember history, slaves wore masks. Not one American is a slave, not one of us. And we have been coerced, which is a felony, coercion is a felony, and this is what it is. We have been coerced to wear slave masks. It's wrong. Children need to see facial recognition, they need social contact, they need to see your face, your expressions. They need to breathe their own oxygen, they have healthy immune systems. So I'm asking you to please reverse these mask mandates, make them optional. By all means, if Pritzker wins his appeal, that will be a different fight for another day. But until that appeal wins or loses, either way it goes, we should at least have masks optional. Give the children a break for the timeframe that they have. This is what I'm asking. I was going to say a lot of other things, but the mask mandates are first and foremost right now. I learned that a fifth grader in District 201 was bullied for the type of mask they were wearing, and political things were said to this child. And I was under the impression that District 201 had an anti-bullying policy in place. Yet, somebody in District 201 dropped the ball and didn't do their job because there was no punishment, no reprimandation, nothing. So I don't know if your bully policy, you pick and choose who to punish and reprimand depending on the context of the bullying or what. But all I know is the people involved should have been reprimanded and fired. Because had it been my child, I would have dragged everyone through court and gave them a living hell. How dare you bully a fifth grader and say things to a fifth grader that is so irrelevant to their education? So that was wrong, and I think that somebody should revisit that and do something about it. Do your job. Remember why you're sitting there. Why are you even sitting there if you don't care about the children? If all you care about is your personal beliefs that are getting in the way, that's wrong. You cannot do that. I don't even do that. It's hard. I understand, we're human. But there's a time and place for everything. Set your personal beliefs to the side, your personal politics to the side, and remember, we are American, we are free. This is 2022, and stop the mandates because they are illegal. And under the law, Governor Pritzker has no authority, which means neither does District 201 or IDPH. No authority. I don't know what part people don't comprehend. Everyone is so busy understanding everything that they literally forgot how to comprehend. And I watch this every day on the news, how much people don't comprehend. It is disgusting.
We're at five minutes. Thank you so much.
Just make it optional, please.
Next, we have, next, we have Stephen Fleck.
We have just under 10 minutes left for mask conversation and public comment.
The last time I spoke at a board meeting was when all of you, as elected board officials, had an opportunity before the governor and ISBE put things in place. You had an option, and not a single board member that was elected here chose to stand up and want to make that choice. You sat around and you waited for days to make a decision so you wouldn't have to. Now you have the opportunity. There is a judge that put something in place. And as they stated before, even if you weren't a plaintiff, they avoided it out. The governor has overstepped his bounds, the Illinois State Board of Education has stepped his bounds. This board is now overstepping its bounds, and it's time to give us, the parents, an option to have a choice. Because it's been proven, we've done everything, we're doing everything you've asked us to comply. Guess what? There's still COVID. There will be COVID. COVID is probably going to be around forever. Some are vaccinated, some are unvaccinated. Even those vaccinated are still getting it. The teachers all wanted to be in the front line to get the vaccination, they got it. We're in school. This is not normal for kids. If this board wants to do something, give us the option back. Every district around us is starting to do it, even those that weren't part of the suit with Tom DeVore. You have the opportunity to do it. But I want to remind you guys of something. You took an oath. And if you don't remember it, the first paragraph says that you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the member of the Board of Education in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of Illinois. Well, a judge just made a law. In my eyes, a temporary restraining order, whatever you want to call it, how you guys are handling this is no different than a domestic restraining order, and a mother or father isn't supposed to be in a school, and you just let them in anyway. Is that what you're teaching our kids, that it's okay to disobey a judge now? This isn't your choice anymore. This is our district. We are the taxpayers. And I admire you all for doing this job, but depending on how all this plays out, and I'm sorry, Mr. Carey, but you don't have the option to sit there and say, "Well, we'll wait and see what the appeal says." This is what the law is now. Implement it. Give us the option. And as that parent said, like we're all have been doing for two years now, if it gets reversed, we'll go back to it. But for now, you should see the schools that reopened today, the smiles on these kids' faces. They want to learn again. They want to do it. Give them that opportunity. If not, as a board, you guys better start figuring out how to handle a lot of mental problems in the future from these kids. Thanks.
Thank you. And again, thank you, everyone, for wearing your masks today and complying with this. Next, we have Dan.
You know what, there's still a couple in the hallway not wearing masks, so we'll just pause again for everyone to be in a mask.
Thank you, guys. I see people passing a message that you have to wear a mask. So if you can continue to pass that message, please. Thank you, guys, for spreading that, giving that message.
I paused the timer.
Thank you. I can't, I can't see everyone, so is it good? I think they're okay. Yeah. Dan, and guys, could you respect everyone and not hold conversations outside of speakers? Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Dan Sebold, and I have two children who now attend Manning Elementary. I wanted to first thank you for your time to allow us to voice our opinions up here tonight. I know in the past six, six-plus months, we have all seen clashes at various school board meetings across the country. I think many of us here tonight saw those, and while we do not, we did not disagree with the messaging in many of those related to masks, we kept silent. Silent because none of us want to be the face of yet another viral video. The spotlight is not something I myself ever seek out. I'm actually an accountant by trade, and you could say I've spent most of my life avoiding situations like this one. However, I cannot continue to avoid the conflict I have with our school district's decision regarding the mask mandate. It bothers me on a number of fronts, but I want to focus on just a few here. First, let's cover effectiveness. The CDC published a study of randomized controlled trial in 2015 on the effectiveness of cloth masks versus medical N95 masks in Vietnam using healthcare workers. Do you know what they found? Rates of infection were consistently higher among those in cloth mask group than in the medical mask and control group. Yes, I said and control groups. This finding suggests that the risk for infection was higher for those wearing the masks, the cloth masks. The cloth masks tested were locally manufactured, double-layered cotton masks, very much like the ones worn by our students daily. Participants were given five cloth masks for a four-week study period and were asked to wash the masks daily with soap and water. The analysis of this study attributes the poor performance, the poor performance may have been because masks were not washed frequently enough or because they become moist and contaminated. The CDC's conclusion on that study itself was that the filtration effectiveness of cloth masks is generally lower than that of medical masks and respirators. However, cloth masks may provide some protection if well-designed and used correctly. The key is used correctly. I know not a single one of you, here or there, can, can look me in the face and honestly say that our children use these masks in any way that could be possibly deemed anything close to effective. It's borderline ignorant to assume that they do. Heck, most of us can't even say this. We are constantly touching the masks to adjust them, taking them off, putting them on numerous times a day. I also know that many of you don't wash them daily. I know this because NBC published a study in October of 2020 that found that 80% of people don't wash their masks after ever use. And even more disturbing, 8% of those people don't ever wash their masks. Now, let's say you disagree with this, and you still feel cloth masks are offering enough suitable protection. Then I ask you, why are we doing this in the first place? I would hope your answer is to protect the children who attend schools in this district. But are our kids really at risk? I would argue, again, based on CDC data, they are not. Let me ask you this. Have any of you visited the CDC website to simply review the COVID death data they have gathered? It is eye-opening, to say the least. I will first mention that the data tracks death with COVID as opposed to, due to COVID. But I'm not even here to debate the merits of the death count published by, by the CDC. When simply taking the CDC death numbers on their face, a stark reality comes to light. COVID poses very little risk to our children. When looking at deaths with COVID for the 0-17 age group over the past two years and compare them to the two prior years' flu data, the 2017-18 and 2018-19 flu seasons, we find that deaths are virtually the same. 898 flu deaths versus 883 COVID deaths. What is startling is the mortality rate based on the number of people infected. Mortality rate of those infected with influenza in that age group was on average 0.75%. The mortality rate of that same age group infected with COVID, 0.0034%. That's 219 times more deadly based on mortality rate. What are we even doing here? Now, again, you can argue that we don't want the kids spreading it to the family members who may be at-risk persons. By not, and by not wanting my child to wear a mask in school, I'm being selfish. I've actually heard this argument from some family members, and I understand and sympathize with that sentiment and those, and those particular at-risk individuals. But kids in these circumstances can wear masks to school by choice. And I would also hope and assume the families with circumstances like these already take proper precautions when they interact with said family member. And by proper, I would hope that means N95 masks and proper distancing. To expect our kids, who, again, based on the data, are at virtually no risk, to continue to breathe in their own dirty air for six and a half hours a day just so others can get some sort of false sense of security about not wearing a mask around these particular at-risk persons is unacceptable. Any individual who can justify otherwise, to me, is truly the selfish one in this scenario. Last, I will remind each and every one of you that the sole purpose here is the health, safety, and well-being of the children that attend this school district. It's not to appease the billionaire governor in Springfield and not to make the jobs of the school district attorneys easier by simply going along.
We're at five minutes. Thank you so much.
How much time do we have left on this topic?
One minute and 30 seconds.
So I'll ask next, Andrea, if that's not enough time for you. I could, we could postpone it to the next session of public speaking, or you can.
Well, I drove an hour to get here. I'm not from this district. I'm from Geneva. But if another parent urgently needs to deliver a message, I'd be happy to.
And we have a minute on this topic. No, this is the policy that we're going to uphold too, because we have other business we have to handle.
So I'll pause at a minute and 30 seconds.
Okay, so I have a minute and 30 seconds. Okay, thank you. My name is Andrea Haig. I am from Geneva, Illinois. My connection to Westmont is that I grew up in Downers Grove, and my parents' business was here. Greg Business Farms down Cass Avenue. And a friend of mine's grandmother owned the Stop &amp; Chat on the corner. It's long gone, but I finally remember Westmont. I want to talk about our experience in Geneva with the way they handled the, the judge's filing on Friday. They waited all weekend, did not let us know what was going to be happening with our students until Sunday night. They canceled school for Monday, and then they let a rumor get out that they were going to go to e-learning on Tuesday because they did not want to follow the judge's ruling. It was just the strangest thing I've ever seen, and I'm seeing that happen here, too. And I'm very concerned about it. The CDC has been very clear on masks. Masks don't work. So now that's two things that our leadership is not listening to. I'm trying to teach my student, my children, and my, my nephews and nieces to listen to authority. And I'm watching you defy authority again and again. These students don't know what to do. On Monday night, the night before they were coming back to school, when they, when the school, the school board sent out a note to all of us.
So we've reached 20 minutes on the mask mandate topic for this round of public comment.
Thank you. We still have time for public comment, and we have, I will proceed and ask if anyone at the time, when public comment comes back up in our agenda, I will follow the order that I have. But we do have time for more public comment, and we have Bill Regala.
I'm good with the disuppered topic, right?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Hello, everyone. Bill Regala here. I've got four kids in the CUSD 2010 eventually. Been here the last three meetings talking about the same topic, grade-level centers. If you don't know, back in December 14th of the 2021 session, this board voted to pass the grade-level centers by a 6-0 vote. What that means is that the Miller and Manning Elementary schools are now separated. So Miller will forever be kindergarten and first grade, and Manning will be second grade through fifth grade. They haven't publicly told you of any of this. There hasn't been a PR notice. There hasn't been an email gone out. And I'll get to this in a minute. Today's February 8, 2022. NOAA Female Official Communication, email, agenda item, discussion. Been up here the last three meetings, asking for any of these things. Have yet to get any of them. I'll ask again, so everyone can know. One, what are the expected outcomes of this new grade-level center configuration? Number two, how will that success be measured? And number three, what are the current benchmarks of those measures?
I'm sorry, Bill.
Yeah.
Hold on. What you have to say is very important. I ask, again, the audience to respect the speakers that are here. If you have conversation, please proceed outside. Please respect our speakers as they're giving their words. Thank you. Sorry.
Good to go?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
Excuse me, can we close this door?
Should I stop?
Would that help?
It may help, but they have a right to hear what he has to say also. Okay, you still have to keep it down. There are glass. We still can hear you. You still have to keep it down.
So you want the door open?
Yes. Leave it open. Keep it down. You can go downstairs or outside. Thank you.
I'll be quick. Sorry. Again, three questions continue to ask. I've had a conversation with Kevin Carey privately, raised, asked, you know, what can we want? What am I asking for? Been up here three times, asking for the same thing. I've sent a letter to the board. There's been other people asking for information. We would like a public statement from Mr. Carey or from the president of the board, Laura Coyle, as it is their responsibility as the PR directive for the community. It's the job of the superintendent to communicate. It is the oath taken by the president of the school board to communicate. Again, we'll look at policies, because policies are so critically important that we have to stop this meeting multiple times to enact policies. Which policies need to be upheld or not? Who decides which policies to follow and not follow? The school board policy, Section 810, Connection with the Community, revised on the 22nd of September 2020, says, "You're supposed to gather community attitudes and desires, earn community goodwill and confidence, keep the news media informed, have regular news releases, have community engagement, make sure they're actively involved in dialogue and collaborative thinking." When this was brought up in the previous discussion, the president of the board, the knee-jerk reaction was to, "Maybe we should change these policies rather than, maybe we should communicate better with the community." It's kind of upsetting that we would hear something like that. We should really not let not having perfect PR get in the way of having any PR. Send an email. We have all these data-driven decisions about all the other things that we're talking about today. Let's have the data-driven decisions about this massive change we've made to this configuration of our elementary schools. The main issue for me, and it continues to be, the precedent set that a small number of stakeholders that were, talked about what this change is happening. There was no real public discussion, and now there's been a non-response publicly and consistently. We're asking for a response. Mr. Carey, Ms. Coyle, who's unfortunately not here, please provide a public response so people can know and actually have a discussion on it. It's hard to debate against the constantly moving target. We don't know what we actually have, because there's nothing publicly made available. It's very upsetting that policies are very important in certain things and then aren't followed in others, where oaths were taken. This is the specific job that you have. We're just not gonna follow those policies, but we need to stop this meeting multiple times for those policies. And while I was burning time earlier, looking at Facebook, there was a post in the Westmont High School where there's 10 out of the 12 people unmasked on the Village of Westmont, public Facebook page, unmasked on the floor of the gym. So are we not following those policies, but we're following policies here or not or there? I'm just confused about what policies are important to follow as the board or not. So again, I'll be here at the next meeting to ask for communication, an email, an agenda item, a discussion of can we have an open and frank conversation of what's happening in this community before? The next thing that just gets railroaded through, no one knows about it because you have not informed us. Again, I thank you for your time.
Jess, I'll just ask, with your timekeeping, are we, what are we at with public comment?
Yeah, there's still about six minutes left for...
Are there any other public comments on other topics besides mask mandate? Yes, if you, yes, when you get a chance to fill out the form, but... Is it regarding mask mandate?
No.
Yes.
This is not really a complaint. It's a request regarding the curriculum with the teachers. Social studies, my child's social studies teacher was given a lesson, and my child came home and told me about this lesson, and I don't agree with it because this teacher could have given this lesson in a different way. I am a pro-Second Amendment household, and this teacher put it in their lesson telling my child that all guns are wrong and no one in the world should have a gun. I understand this teacher has their personal feelings and beliefs, and that's one thing. And when you're giving a lesson, I would appreciate it if you would figure out a different way how to teach a child what you're trying to express without putting your personal beliefs and feelings upon this child when you don't know how this child is being raised. So moving forward, I would really appreciate if that was done with all teachers in any type of lesson, and I have not spoken to this teacher about this. But I do, would appreciate it if there would be better, different ways in how to teach children with, again, without putting your personal beliefs upon them. Because it's a conflict at home with me, so that's all I have to say on that.
When you have a chance, can you fill out another form just with that topic?
I thought I could have my first one. It's the second item on my card.
Okay. Thank you. If there's not another speaker at this time on a different topic, we're gonna move along with the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. One, personnel recommendations: Kelly Smith, WJHS, part-time administrative assistant, in residence nations. Two, approval of student tours, Westmont High School.
I moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Steckity.
Yes.
Ms. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Ms. Canover.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
We'll move along to our information and discussion.
You know what? Since, I think they said they can hear in the hallway even if we close the door. There's a speaker. Can we close the door? Is that, is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll move along to the update on summer school.
So the administrative team, we're planning on summer school for the summer of 2022, and tentatively, the dates would be June 6 through June 23. We're still finalizing this, but it'll be similar to last year, where most of the classes will meet four days a week for three weeks. And the classes will be Monday through Thursday, 8:30 to 11:00. The Miller-Manning program will be by invitation only, and will focus on individual students' needs in math and reading. And then the Westmont Junior High program will be very similar. There will be the math and reading, which will be by invitation only. They are also, will have their step up to sixth grade, which is typically in August, and that's for students who are transitioning from fifth to sixth grade. Junior high and the high school are also looking at possible enrichment programs for the summer. Those would not be by invitation only. Those would be open to all students. The high school will have similar offerings as last year, blend of enrichment and additional support. They'll offer credit recovery, transition to English and math, bump up to honors math, bump up to pre-calc, jump to AP Human Geography. And then they also, in August, have a freshman, new student orientation. There is no cost for our summer school program, and then we do provide transportation, but the, what we do is we use each of our school buildings as kind of the bus stop. So students just have to walk to the school, and then they're transported typically to the high school for summer school. Usually, it's around parent-teacher conferences. Those students who have been, who will be receiving invitations for the reading and math, that's typically around parent-teacher conferences. The teacher usually has that conversation with the parents. And we'll be finalizing the information and getting that information out to our school families.
Was, last year, was that the first summer that Miller and Manning did that invitation-only summer school? Did they feel like that was helpful?
Yes, they did.
Good. Okay.
Yep.
So is summer school held in one building, or is each of it at...?
We haven't finalized that. We've used the junior high and the high school. The junior high, we possibly will be having a major HVAC project, so that would eliminate the junior high. Last year, we also used Manning for the elementary level, and we haven't finalized that level of detail if it'll be at Manning and at the high school.
Okay. And my thought around it is just as we continue to reexamine kind of bus route situations, you know, if it makes the most sense for it to be in one school, and if that's even possible to limit the number of buses that we need, and maybe that means we can transport more students.
Sure.
Potentially. And you said no cost?
No cost.
And the transportation is the mile?
Correct.
And that is set by the state. Can you remind me, how does that work again?
It's actually a mile and a half, you know, that a student can walk a mile and a half. That's what the state sets, but using, we actually use Washington Park and then Miller-Manning for the pickup sites in South. And for most students, that's well within that radius.
Okay. So it's a mile and a half for, and then that's what we get reimbursed for?
Right.
Is that right? And then anything?
But now for, summer school, we don't receive reimbursement.
We don't receive any reimbursement for summer school. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions in summer school? We'll move along to the update on the 2021-2022 school year.
So each board meeting, I present to our committee an update on how the 2021-22 school year is going, and I always start with a review because we never know who is watching for the first time. But we have our guiding principles of how we want to have our decision-making and how we want to focus on the school year, and so the health and safety of our students and staff is foremost. We want to prioritize that we stay in person full-time, and we have been able to do that throughout the school year. We haven't had to flip to remote. We want to make sure that our learning is meaningful and engaging, and that we address the social-emotional needs of our students, that we provide consistent stability for our students and staff, and that throughout the year, we're providing professional development for our staff, and we've been able to meet all of those. Currently, if you look at DuPage County, DuPage County is at a high level of transmission. As of last Friday, there were 450 new cases per 100,000, and the positivity rate is 8.8%, but definitely is trending and getting lower. If we take a look at our local community positivity rates, again, you can see where we're at in November prior to the holiday season, and then you can see that we peaked at around January 7 and as of last Friday. So again, all the numbers are trending in a good direction, a positive direction for our surrounding areas, and our local average is 8.96%. And for our DuPage County, it's 8.8%. When you look at new cases per 100,000, again, where we were a couple of, you know, at the beginning of January and where we are now, definitely a tremendous improvement. So those are all positives, that everything is trending in the right direction. In terms of our own local data for our staff since our last board meeting, we've had four staff members test positive for COVID, and year-to-date, we've had 24, and for non-certified, we've had 13. And then for our students, you can see since our last board meeting, the number of students that had COVID symptoms in each of our schools year-to-date, and then the number of students that have tested positive since our last board meeting, and again, since year-to-date, you can see where we are. And then students who have been excluded, and again, with the junior high and high school, when students are vaccinated, then the close contacts, they can, as long as they're symptom-free, they can remain in school. And so out of the 13 at the junior high, eight students were vaccinated, and at the high school, the 11 that were close contacts, 10 were vaccinated. And so those students were able to remain in school. In terms of our vaccination status, again, this is voluntary, that our parents share this information for us, and they scan it into Skyward, so you can see where we're at. As a district, we're just shy of 20% of our students that are vaccinated.
Kevin, can I just ask a question while we're on that slide? What kind of steps are being taken to encourage families to report? Because those numbers seem pretty low to me, and I imagine they're a little higher than that.
Right. I know in my weekly communication, I'm asking for parents to share that information, and then the principals are as well. You know, so on a weekly basis, we're asking for that information. Most of the time, we are, it seems like we get it when there is a close contact, then we start to get that information. So, but we continue to ask for that. There is a way that we're gonna look into. The challenge is, and we talked about this, there's a way to, through zip code, the nurses can check to see vaccination status because the nurses have to know vaccination status of students for a variety of vaccines. And, but it's done by zip code, and the challenge for us always is 60559 is not just 201. It's also marker, school district as well. And so that's the challenge, is how to, you know, narrow that search down so that we can maybe start to get that on our own, you know, so we are looking into it.
I think that would be helpful, just to get something more accurate, especially if, as we'll talk about later, if ever, you know, vaccination percentage is connected to metrics that we use for decision-making.
Right. Right. And then the DuPage County Health Department, and, you know, IDPAs rely on the CDC transmission levels. The two criteria that it's based on is, again, the number of new cases per 100,000, and then the positivity rate over the last seven days. And it just takes one of those to put you into the high level of transmission. And so the positivity rate is trending nicely. We need to get the new cases for 100,000 to decrease as well, and then we'll start to see us transition to substantial and moderate levels of transmission. Again, we're currently under the executive order. We're doing physical distance in our schools at three feet. Buses are requiring masks, and then our contact tracing is based on three feet because our students are masked. Again, there are consequences if schools defy the executive order. Schools can lose their accreditation, cannot participate in IHSA, and the ISB can not recognize diplomas. And just as a reminder for our students, if they have COVID-like symptoms, they should stay home and can return with a doctor's note or a negative PCR test. Close contacts are defined, again, when masks is three feet for more than 15 minutes, less than six feet when unmasked for 15 minutes. And then again, there's the, you know, unvaccinated person, test positive for COVID. They have to quarantine for five days, and if symptoms improve and no diarrhea or vomiting in the last 24 hours, they can return to school. And unvaccinated, close contacts, can return in five days. Or we're doing test to stay, and so if you're tested days one, three, five, and seven, you can return. Vaccinated persons who test positive still have to quarantine. Vaccinated persons who test positive still have to quarantine, but then vaccinated close contacts do not need to be excluded from school. And then again, we are doing testing. It's again voluntary. And the Page County Health Department now is supporting the test to stay. We are working on North Shore Labs to provide our COVID testing and that's requires parent permission and it's voluntary basis.
Kevin, can I see a quick question?
Sure.
The test to stay, does North Shore Labs provide that service?
Yes. So, well, actually, they they are, it's our nurses that do the testing, but then North Shore Lab picks up the samples and takes them to their lab to process them.
Great. Thank you.
So then Sagamon County, of course, had their lawsuits and 201 was not named in lawsuit. And so the judge's temporary restraining order impacts those districts, those complaints named in the lawsuit. There is a appeal that has been filed, which the latest will find out anything is February 17th. And that could reverse the judge's ruling and then back to the to the mandates. In terms of why 201 is still requiring masks, again, 201 was not named in lawsuit. The other thing is that the board approved our back to school plan August 3rd, which was prior to the governor's executive orders. And we did include a district mask requirement at that time. The TRO is being appealed and a stay has been filed. And again, one of our goals is consistent stability for our students and staff. And, you know, if the success, if the appeal is successful or if their stay is in place, then you could have a whiplash effect. You know, you allow masks to be optional and then you have to, within a short period of time, then require masks again. And that could definitely be a very difficult transition. And so that weighs into our to our thinking.
Is there any sense of when that appeal will be completed?
The latest would be the 17th of February.
Okay. So just next week, we should?
Right. Because it's after the judge in the circuit court issued her TRO, then there was a, you had two days to file an appeal, which the governor, I think the state board of ed did as well. And then now there's two days for the counter argument to be filed. And then the appellate court has to deliberate on it, but they have to, I think they have five days to deliberate. So the timeline ends up being the, on the outside, being February 17th. You know, and then, and again, it's sometimes the unintended consequences because, and I'm not saying this to be to be an alarmist or or saying that, you know, it's impossible. I think everybody's looking for an off ramp where we can get to masks being optional.
Well, thank you then.
Excuse me, excuse me. Will, you cannot interrupt us and speak out. This is not the board, the board meeting is not for engagement. So please hold what you're saying and refrain from doing that.
How real?
Have you not interrupt us again or you'll be asked to leave? Thank you.
So we're all looking for that off ramp, but there are considerations that, you know, we always have to consider. And, you know, currently, the the CDC, when students are unmasked, wants six feet of social distancing. My guess is that if indeed we go down the road of masks being optional, then the CDC will revisit those guidelines. And so hopefully the six feet won't be an issue. But that's something to be considered, you know, that the other thing that you always have to consider is, you know, we have students and staff that are medically fragile. And so what does that mean? You know, even if vaccinated in an unmasked environment, do we need to make some accommodations for students and staff? And those have to be done thoughtfully so that we address address their needs. Again, the district has, all along, we follow the recommendations of the CDC, the IDPH, the Page County Health Department. And one of the things we've always looked at is those transmission levels in our decision making. All last year, in our decisions as to when we should be remote, when we could be in person, when we had to be hybrid, all those were driven by the metrics that we were looking at in terms of the CDC and the IDPH. When we look at the mask mandate being lifted, some of the discussions the board has had is also looking at, you know, metrics. And, you know, if, when we get to a low level of transmission, is that when we start to look at it? Do we look at vaccination rates of our students and staff? You know, if we do, then as Jess pointed out, we need to have a better way of collecting that vaccination data because definitely vaccination rate is higher. Do we look at the local positivity rates and new cases or do we just look internally at our schools, you know, for that information? So those are some of the things that we need to consider. You know, even if, you know, the the appeal fails, those are still some considerations that we have to work through. Again, to find our way, our path to getting to that mask being optional.
But to be clear, this is not where we're at. We haven't decided on this.
No, we haven't.
This is what we talked about way back in the beginning.
Right.
And also to clarify, we we cannot take action on any of this.
No, no, this is discussion.
We can talk about it though. I just wanted to clarify those two things before we go any further. Okay.
Kevin, can I ask, like, again, we've discussed these things, like, what are we going to look at or asking health departments as they, you know, we've already thought ahead in previous meetings that this is not static.
Right.
And, you know, this whole pandemic, we're, you know, we've been through it, we've changed even how we look at distancing. And I thank them for that guidance. But any updates or words on changing how we look at things? Is there any talk about even the previous chart you had with looking at the rates of transmission and how much that carries over until safety? Is there any talk of that between superintendents or even, I guess it's not the superintendents, the health professionals?
Right.
That give recommendations? Any?
We we haven't, we haven't met with the Page County Health Department recently. So we haven't had those conversations. My guess is though, that will be part of our conversations going forward.
I, I think that looking at the metrics for making masks optional is something that needs to be revisited. I think that when we, when we look at where we were at the beginning of the school year and what the numbers looked like then and where we are now in the way, in the way things are trending, it's, it's probably a good idea. I think of, something that jumps off the page to me and has now for a number of weeks is the positivity rate versus the new cases and how we are consistently, there's such a big difference between these two classified or these four classifications on here, right? And how, right now, for the, the school district itself is in moderate transmission for positivity, but it's still in high transmission in terms of new cases. So it would be worth looking at that with the DuPage County Health Department and understanding if there's an, if there's an adjustment in thinking because we're going by something that we've been going by since August and maybe, maybe that's outdated.
Right. Right.
So that's, that's one thing that I think is worth looking at. And the other thing that you mentioned earlier is the possibility of having to go back to remote learning as a result of making masks optional. And I mean, I, I know, because I've sat in every single one of these board meetings since the beginning of the school year, and I know that, that our number two priority is in-person learning. So I think that if going mask optional at this point without revisiting these numbers means going back to remote learning, then that's a terrible, terrible idea.
Right. And and part of that is to Adina's question, you know, what are, you know, DuPage County Health Department, you know, having conversations with them? Because ultimately, you know, last year, districts had that autonomy, you know, to flip to remote. This year, it's, you have to consult with the health department before.
Before going remote.
Before going remote. And we've had some, some weeks where we've had some, you know, significant increases in positive cases. We've had, you know, particular classrooms or grade levels. And we were not, we, the Page County Health Department never recommended us to flip to remote as long as we had the mitigations in place. In other words, as long as we were wearing masks, three feet apart, following those things, then we could still stay in. The question among superintendents is, okay, so if masks are optional, what's the Page County Health Department's response? You know, are they going to say, well, if masks are optional, then we recommend you flip? Or will they adjust their thinking because of, because of the numbers and that won't be?
So what's the process for engaging with the Page County Health Department? What's that look like? What is the school, what does the, the school administration need to do and how soon can you do it?
We can reach out to the Page County Health Department. I was hoping, we had a, the Page County superintendents, we met virtually on Monday afternoon. I was hoping that the health department was going to be a part of that as well. They were not. And so typically that's when we ask those questions and we get some feedback and we get some guidance. So I can reach out to the health department and see what their thinking is and see if they are going to be, you know, amending their thinking as well. So that provides us a little bit more guidance.
When they might amend their thinking or when we, when we as a school district or when school districts in DuPage County have an opportunity to to each engage on the, on the topic? I'd like to know first the first.
Right.
Obviously, if there's a change in the recommendation, that's, that's, that's a bigger deal, right? But but I'd like to know as soon as possible when, when and how that conversation with the, with the county happens.
Sure.
Thanks.
And just to clarify, Kevin, I know there, and I think we've, a number, number of us have asked this question a lot, like, who, where is this recommendation coming from? Is it coming from you solely? Is it coming, where is, where are our recommendations coming from?
The recommendations are coming from our attorney. And so, you know, in, in, you know, this weekend, there were a lot of conversations, you know?
I mean, even from the, the recommendations of what we follow, as you said, with mitigations.
The, well, the mitigation. The mitigations, that's, we follow the CDC, the IDPH, Page County Health Department. You know, that's where that guidance is coming from.
I, I'd just like to reiterate that, that this board, I think even with myself, to be honest, you know, trying to think of ways like, what metrics should we change? How can we change? What papers do we read? What studies do we read? As a physician, that's a course in itself because you'll read a paper and then find it debunked. And you learn how to trust one study over another. But I think it's been said before, that's not the job of this board is to figure out what studies are valid and what are not, which are not, we have professionals for that. We have, you know, healthcare providers, epidemiologists, public health providers that help us to make those decisions. And that's not coming from a sole person on a board or the superintendent. We ask for guidance. And I think it's correct what you're saying, like, we can push for, you know, more and to ask that we, you know, we need guidance. And I think, you know, the country overall is saying, okay, we were here a year ago. What thinking can we change? Is it the right time to look at different things and look at, into things at a different way? I think those are fair, all with the guidance of safety or the goal of safety and in-person learning.
Yeah. Thanks for mentioning that, Adina. I remember that conversation well, when we were really getting into the weeds of like percentage of vaccinations and all of these things that we're not really qualified to decide on. And I think we, what we did agree on was let's continue to listen to the CDC and the IDPH. And I, you know, and, and I think that they will be coming out with, I hope.
Yeah, I think so.
But yes, if we can push them for that in any way, shape or form, some of that guidance, then I think we need to do that. I, I worry a little bit about this question about will we need to resume six feet social distancing? It doesn't say that we need to do that anywhere. And so it's not even something that I think we should be talking about here yet because it's really a non-issue. And I don't know that, I don't think the CDC does say if you're not wearing a mask, then you have to be six feet apart.
No, it's, it's recommended, but again, and, and this is a question for the DuPage County Health Department, again, what is their thinking going to be, you know?
Yeah.
As we start to lessen some of the mitigations?
Right.
What is their thinking?
And and similarly, why I think it's important to get the guidance from, from elsewhere. Like, if we're talking about medically fragile students and medically fragile staff especially who've had that opportunity to be vaccinated and boosted, like, how many people are we actually talking about who are medically fragile and also unable to get the vaccine? Like, can't, like, can't get it? That, I feel like that's got to be a pretty small amount of people that were holding on to this policy.
No, and it's, you know, that's, I'm, the, the reason for bringing these things up is again, it's, it's not just like flipping a light switch, you know? So you do have to take these things into consideration. We also have three bargaining units that we have to work through and we are working through these things with. But, you know, you can, you can have some people who are fully vaccinated, but still their doctor may recommend, and if in your classroom, it's going to be, you know, students are going to be unmasked, that's not an environment that you can be in. I mean, that can happen and you won't, you know, I can think of a few people that come to mind, but you won't know that until you get into that situation and then those letters start coming in. You know, same thing for students, you know? So the student process is a little bit different because you have to go through a 504 and IP process, but for staff, you know, you have to, have to work through that. And whether or not, you know, do you, like, last year, we had some of our staff that taught remotely, the class was in person, taught remotely, there was a TA in the room. So are we going to go back to that model? Are we going to tell that staff member, you have to take a medical leave and then we're going to hire us?
Well, I don't think we would go back to that model because they've had the chance to be vaccinated and boosted. I just, where, I guess I'm wondering where, like, we start to draw the line a little bit. If not there, where, you know? So what's the, I guess I'm wondering what the conversation has been like?
Well, the, you know, that's the conversation. You know, the conversation is, it depends on what that the, the doctor indicates for that employee. And then as a district, you have to go one of two routes. You either are telling an employee they have to go on a medical leave. If truly they can't be in person, then they have to go on a medical leave, you know? There are probably some positions that it may be very difficult to get a quality full time sub for, and you may go the route of they're still able to teach remotely. But again, it will have to weigh those options.
So, sorry, I, I fear that the further we kind of go down the rabbit hole of like, how many of this person, how many of that person, same on, on vaccinations and whatnot, I fear it's kind of opposite of what we've said about following the CDC guidelines is that we decided to follow the CDC guidelines because we're not doctors, except for doctors who are, because we only have one doctor on the board. Because, because for us to, to get into that kind of level of nitty gritty when we are not the experts on it, it feels similar on that side to go into how many, what are the potential outcomes? Da da da. We just know that, we know that this is a, it's a potential outcome.
Which is why I don't think we should be addressing it quite honestly. Like, I think it's, it does raise unnecessary fear and concern and it just sets us back in this path of remote and all of that, and that's not where we want to go. I, I think it's simple. If we're, if we have to follow the mandate legally, then we continue to follow it. And if we don't, then we wait for that, the guidance from the, the health departments that we said we would follow.
So you're saying kind of take it out of the considerations? Is that what you're saying? If I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying like, just take it out of the considerations? Because if it's an outcome, it's an outcome, we have to deal with it?
Yes.
Which I think is fair.
Right.
Yes.
Kevin, can you talk more about the bargaining units? You mentioned you, you're having to work with them. What do you mean? What, what have those conversations been like?
Well, you know, I do have to say that all throughout the pandemic, right? We've been able to work very well together. So it's just a matter of, again, having those conversations, you know, in some cases is a change in working conditions, so you got to work through that process. Again, it's. to work through that process. Again, it's making sure that, you know, that as we transition that, you know, I think our unions will be reasonable and not have any really unrealistic expectations. But you need to make sure that, you know, if we go down mask optional, what does that look like for the staff and what are their concerns and how can we mitigate those concerns?
Can you, can you speak to that kind of in terms of what we have already seen like with the city of Chicago, right? So they had, they had been negotiating with their bargaining unit, opened that up, and then they had closed that pre the judge's temporary restraining order. And that had somehow played into the city's reasoning. Is that because it's in their union contract? Now that they have to be masked, how does that, I'm just looking for kind of like an understanding of the real life situation that is happening in Chicago for us to understand.
Right. And well, CPS operates totally differently. And honestly, I don't know how they were able to do their work stoppage. I don't know how that worked when they're under contract. But basically, yes, they reached a memo of understanding of, you know, testing what percent of people had to be tested, positivity rates when they would go to remote, if there was a certain positivity rate in a building. So they have an MOU in place for that, you know? Our MOUs that we have, memo of understandings, revolve more around if somebody contracts COVID and needs time off of work and how much is personal time versus COVID time, those types of things. So that's what our MOUs are for, are in place. So it could be that, you know, it could be, hey, you know, we're going to be possibly greater exposure, so, you know, let's look at our personal time off and what that looks like. So it's those types of things. I don't, we don't have to worry about a work stoppage. Worst-case scenario, and again, I don't know, Jess, I don't think you want to hear worst-case scenarios.
No.
Because again, you know, but, but you do have to, right, you do have to.
It's a balance.
Right. And so you have to sometimes anticipate. But you could have, and I'm not saying our union would do this, but you could have, you know, a filing with the Labor Board that's an unsafe work environment, you know, unless A, B, and C happens. Well, that's a whole different avenue to go and navigate. But again, we've been working very well together. I don't anticipate, as we transition, I don't anticipate any issues. It's just a matter of sitting down and determining what are some of those things that we may have to put into a memo of understanding.
Okay, that's helpful, understanding the memo of understanding a little bit better. That is helpful. Thank you.
And helpful to hear that things have been going well and that we don't think the worst-case scenario situation will happen.
That's tough on me. That's my job, is you have to, you have to prepare.
Right.
I just wanted to speak just to, I know you're saying the CDC doesn't recommend spacing, but I think in fact they do. And the way that they do it is layered mitigation. So yes, masks are not 100% going to prevent COVID, but together, mask with spacing, with testing protocols, you're going to decrease your transmission, which we've proven, I think in schools, that transmission is low, but that's together. And so again, again, the pushing of what mitigations will be recommended, not, you know, that's not something we want to try to make up ourselves. And also, I don't want to, you know, I don't look forward to that worst-case scenario where it's remote or, you know, at all costs. We've been there and I don't think we have to go, you know, back there. We have students in class, we have students participating in sports and interacting with each other. In the arts and programs and band, we have been moving along. And so in that we can do those things. But altogether, you know, they've been given, they gave us recommendations to use those altogether. As we start to take one off, are there any mitigations that we're going to have? You know, I don't know. And that's, you know, my question.
Well, testing is one, right?
Yeah.
Testing is one, three-foot distancing we could keep.
And that may be their recommendation. And so, you know, we push that, push forward and asking. That's something they see with other examples out there. If they're just using this testing, is that enough? Is that their recommendation? So really, really look forward to that.
I think we're, I'm not going to use the word lucky, not during this pandemic. But it's, I mean, many, many, many states have moved to mask optional already and have not necessarily seen huge increases in transmission. And so kind of being one of the last ones, I do anticipate that within the next couple of weeks, we're going to get
I think so.
A lot of information and guidance from the governor, from probably, hopefully, CDC, IDPH. I think we need to be a little bit patient. I think for tonight, one of the things that I'm hoping we can really clarify is the discussion based on the decision on Friday. And so I'm hoping we could really quickly go back to the slide about the Sangamon County lawsuits and just hear a little, because it, I'm not sure. And there's so many differing opinions about the verbiage of that ruling. And, you know, we haven't had an opportunity to hear from Mr. Gullett, our district attorney, but you've been working with him. So what has he said? I want to be sure that we're not breaking the law. So can you explain that?
Sure. So the first ruling that came out was actually the, was whether or not this was, they would qualify as a class action. And that ruling was no, it didn't. They didn't meet, there's like four criteria that you need to meet. And they did not meet those criteria. So what that essentially did then is it did set the direction that whatever the ruling is, is for those particular individuals named in the lawsuit. So other, because at one time, the question was, does this pertain to, you know, school districts named in law? You know, that are part of, that the students, schools that the students attended? Or was it going to be all schools in Illinois or how this was going to? And because the judge determined that initially, and that came out about noon on Friday, that meant that the ruling coming out didn't only apply to those individuals. So that then when the temporary restraining orders came out, that only applied to those individuals named. So there are school districts right now that have students in their schools that were named. And for those students, it's optional, but for the rest of the school, there's still mask mandate in place for students instead. So there are some districts that went that direction. Some school districts that had students named opted to have the entire school district go optional rather than just those students. Some school districts who did not have anybody named, you know, opted to say, you know what, we're just going to go mask optional. And then school districts who were not named then also chose to, you know what, we're going to keep our mitigations in place. So when my discussions with our attorney was about the different options, and again, it was his recommendation, you know, the conservative recommendation, his recommendation was, right now you stay in the course and you keep your mitigations in place. And again, part of it is because, you know, it's like putting toothpaste back in the tube. It's very difficult. So if you go with a mask optional and then, you know, it could have been as early as 48 hours, you know, then having to reverse, it would be very difficult. And so his recommendation is wait to see what the appellate court, the appellate court, regardless of how it rules, will have greater clarity. And if it does rule in favor of the circuit court, that appellate decision will be more encompassing and provide clarity. And then school districts know definitively which direction they need to go. But right now, it's our attorney's interpretation that it's only those individuals named in the lawsuit that the restraining order applies to.
And that being said, like that decision comes out, is there any other guidance that comes with it? You know, mask optional, mask mandate, do they give anything else to say what next steps are? Or they just kind of leave it out there and?
No, it's actually a restraining order. There hasn't, they haven't really heard, the judge hasn't heard the case. The ruling was just on a temporary restraining order, but still has to hear the actual suit now. But the, and so it's the governor's office, again, the state board of ed, I think maybe the IDPH, and then some districts as well. Some school districts chose not to, but some school districts have also filed appeals, appealing the restraining order. And so basically putting a stay on the restraining order until there can be the full process of the suit take place.
So I know Jeff won't like this, but looking at that, thinking about that next decision, I guess for this board, that decision comes out, if it is met, mask optional, what's the job of this board at this point? I know we talked about
Right.
Another meeting or a special meeting.
Right. Then we would have a special meeting to amend our plan for the school year. And then, you know, either, and then the board has decisions to make. Mask optional, are you going to look at different criteria in order to say this is when we go mask optional? But that's ultimately the board's decision at that point.
And so do we wait until that decision or we start to?
I think we can start having those conversations about, you know, the metrics and so forth. If we're going to go down the road of metrics.
But I mean, do we wait to plan that meeting as we hear?
You know, I think, you know, I think between what Jess alluded to, you know, other states already are, you know, lessening the mitigations. And so, and the governor indicated, he's looking at those as well and he's putting a plan in place. So I think that there will be a timeline to follow. And I think we'd be able to have that timeline to plan and get it in place.
Just one thing, I want to remind all of us, the board I'm talking to, that when we talked about opening for the school year and requiring or not requiring masks, our decision was based not on the governor's executive order. In fact, we had already discussed this as a board beforehand and agreed that we were following the guidelines of the CDC, the Illinois Department of Health and the DuPage County Department of Health. That has not changed. That's still how we're operating today. And so I think what we're saying, what I'm hearing, and definitely what I'm advocating, is that we revisit our criteria. Not because of a decision that was made somewhere else that has no effect on us in reality or in law, but rather on our own decision-making criteria and what we believe are the right metrics or the right guidance to follow. So right now, we're not likely to influence the CDC or even understand where the CDC is going. We're slightly more likely, but still not very likely, to have that success at the state level. So the closest thing to us that we've chosen to follow is the DuPage County Department of Health. So that's where I think we need to start. Because waiting for someone else, somewhere else, doesn't seem like what we want to do. And I think it's time, I think we've said it tonight, it's time to revisit our criteria. So let's not wait seven days or 10 days. Let's put a plan in place to revisit that criteria and let's start with the DuPage County. That's how I see it. I'm not saying that to get applause because I don't think.
No, I agree. You're following what you guys put in place.
I'm saying that this is, this is the path we're on. In fact, we said before, as the school year goes on, we will revisit the criteria to get to mask optional. And so.
Yeah. I think, I know what you're saying, Carl. I mean, because we've always said, like, we'll decide on this, but COVID from the beginning has been very dynamic and fluid. And so we said, you know, we'll start with this and then we'll revisit. I agree with what you said about waiting on the CDC. That feels like a thing, yeah, who knows what's happening there. But yeah, Adina, though, I think we need, we need a plan, we all think we need a plan of action because there's this appellate decision that's going to come out next week.
Seventeen.
And that may kind of scoop in more districts saying that, you know, no, you can go mask optional. And I do think part of the, like, yeah, I think we need to look at our criteria because I think we have more information now too than we did even in August about vaccine effectiveness and how much that reduces both hospitalization and death, as well as the minuscule risk to children, so many things. I hear you when we talk about the medically fragile groups, but I think if we're going to talk about that group, we have to talk about the other data as well. And I'm happy, I don't know what my decision is, but if we're, if that's where we're going, we need to look at actual data and facts and statistics. And so I don't know if that's, I don't know if we meet with the IDPH to talk about that, you do, but we need to get going on that.
And just, if the IDPH says, no, we haven't changed any of our recommendations, then I'm not sure why we would change any of ours. I'm just saying that it's time to revisit it. Because I, my knowledge is that we're going on recommendations, and I'd like to know that there, if IDPH or the Department of, the Page County is going to change the recommendations, we can have access to that knowledge. I don't see us getting that knowledge from the CDC. I don't see it, you know? So I would start with DuPage and say, what are you guys doing? When is your next recommendation? When do you update your recommendation? Does it happen monthly? Does it happen weekly? Does it happen daily? I don't know.
So to clarify, what we have said, what we have agreed to, our reopening plans, if you will, has been to follow the guidelines
Yes.
That have been set forth by ultimately CDC, IDPH, and down to DuPage County Health Department because they're all tied together. So are you recommending that we relook at if that is still the direction that we want to go? Yes or no? And/or do we want to explore metrics, Westmont 201 specific and create metrics? That's, I'm unclear there. Is it reviewing? Do we continue, you know, to follow? And if the answer is yes, okay. And if the answer is no, then do we create our own metrics? Is that?
No, I'm more in the former. I'm more in the camp of what is, what's closest to us is DuPage County Health. So let's start there and ask them, are they planning to update? And if so, when? That would be, that's step one, right? And if they are planning to update, then we have clues as to how we should be looking at this.
Is there, and Kevin, all new here, right, newish, is there a way to like, for the board to issue like a letter to the DuPage County Health Department? Just
Asking.
Asking that information, right? Just publicly, just a public way for us to say, we're, we implore you, right? We want to find an exit from this, but we want to do it with, with the medical professionals, right? Advice and understanding and we want to, and we implore you to help us find that path. Like, is that something that, is that something that school boards do? Is that something we can do?
I mean, well, can you? Yes. But, and I can reach out to the Page County Health Department and have those conversations. I think, you know, without having the conversation, I think they'd be hesitant to tell a school district, this is what you should do. You know what I mean? I, no.
That is what they have been doing. They have been saying, these are our recommendations.
Here's, well, early on, I'll give you the, because, you know, we were working with the Page County Health Department since the beginning of the pandemic. Early on, superintendents were asking for metrics of when to determine when we should be in school and when we should be remote. And that was after, you know, initially, schools didn't have the choice because the decision was made, all schools were going remote. So then the following year, everybody was having debates about should we be in person, should we be remote? And the superintendents pushed really hard and the Page County Health Department put together some metrics. They put together some metrics. And then there were some superintendents who are not happy with those metrics and then started to push really hard back on the Page County Health Department. And finally, the Page County Health Department got very frustrated and said, listen, you guys asked for this, you're not happy with it, you know, why are you asking for this? So I think So I think they'd be hesitant because of their experience. But I think as what Carlos is saying, you know, what, you know, as they're looking at the landscape, what do they think it looks like in, in kind of repealing some of those mitigations, you know? And what's the best way to do that? I think they would give feedback on that, you know?
Like how to
And I think that's peel the layers back.
Right, how to peel the layers back, and, and, you know, possibly what's the first layer that's peeled, you know? And I think they would
Which is kind of, I mean, that was what we were talking about originally when we, when we first decided was, was what layers go when.
Right.
You know, in a layered approach as opposed to just a
Right.
no mitigation approach.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's our, our big question that we ask, because it's coming, we all know that it's coming, that, um, even before, as we spoke about putting the mask mandate, we know that we have our ups and downs with COVID, and there's going to turn that we're in a, in a lull, and it's not static. We shouldn't just say all these mitigations all the time. But yes, I think that is the best question, like, how do you peel back those? What do you recommend first? You know, give us your recommendation. We know it's a recommendations, we have, they're not making laws, they're giving their professional recommendation, that's what we're asking for, and, and going from there. Because it's, it is, it's coming every once. Before this judgment and suit went in place, we spoke about it in our meetings.
Right.
That numbers will go low again. What, how are we going to address, how we approach teaching and learning?
Because we were already, you know, if you guys remember June, right?
Yeah.
We were already having conversations about what the opening of school would look like, and whether we need to require masking, and then by July, it, you know, and so it's just that this, you know, it's very fluid. And so definitely, numbers are looking different now, you know? I can reach out to the Page County Health Department and get that information from them. And then if the board wants to, you know, meet next week prior to the 17th, you know, in the event that a ruling comes out the 17th, you're better positioned, you know, we can do that.
Yeah, just to be clear, what I, what I'm asking, I don't know about the rest of the board, what I'm asking of the Page County Department of Health is, have they updated their guidance? And if not, when are they planning to update? When does the next update come out? When did they update there? That would be at least a starting point, and then we can go from there. If that, if that were in your board report for the, for Friday, that would be
Sure.
optimal.
Sure. The first answer is they have not, because we would have been notified if it was updated. So they have not. Now, the second question, when do they anticipate updating it? That can be asked and get an answer for.
Because do, does DuPage County Health Department, do, are they following someone else's guidelines, like Illinois Department of Public Health?
Um, yeah, they, they work with the Illinois Department of Public Health, you know?
Like, are they waiting for someone else to make a change so they can make a change?
They, they try to be on the same page, you know, as much as possible, but, um, if you look at our state, that isn't the case, you know? So, but, uh, sometimes, sometimes they wait on the, uh, Illinois Department of Public Health, you know, for instance, the test of state.
Mm-hmm.
Illinois Department of Public Health signed off on test of state before DuPage County Public Health did. And the Page County Health Department wasn't willing to because of something the CDC was saying. So they sometimes don't align, but they try to align as, as often as possible.
I guess, I guess I'm trying to figure out where we go next, and it does, I think that what I'm, what I'm hearing, and anybody correct me if I'm wrong on the board, but I think we're all kind of eager to have sort of our clear path to, to mask optional. I think we're there for, for me, based on what I'm, what I, facts and data that I've seen and read and heard, I feel comfortable moving in that direction, but we need to, I think, vote on that. When does that happen? What do we need to do first? I think we need to do what Carlos is asking for first. Got some information, but, but I think that also the community deserves to know what that timeline is and when that decision will be made, and what that pathway to mask optional looks like. I'm not sure that I feel comfortable just saying, we're just going to write out the rest of this school year in masks. I don't feel good about that.
I don't think anyone's saying that.
So what is the, the next step?
I think it's the pathway of getting this information and then making that timeline.
Right.
I don't think it's a blanket answer with it, because we do have to take steps in how, what we have in place with, you know, with recommendations. I think we start with ourselves, looking at, you know, just our timeline with meetings and how we get information in, but we also need that information first. So that's, you know, something we employ with you, with speaking with the DuPage County of Health, just to find out, you know? Those questions are answered, and when's, when's the next step? When's the next meeting about that?
Yeah, when is, when is our next?
How does that affect
Our next
Board meeting?
Next board meeting is the 22nd.
So, yeah, okay.
So it'd be after the appellate court ruling, which, again, again, depending upon which way the appellate court rules, a good rule, mask mandates are back in place, you know, until, you know, the suit is, is, uh, heard. So if that's the case, then, you know, we're, we're back to mandate a mask. And then it, then you're waiting on the governor, and the governor has indicated that he is going to be rolling out his plan, you know, to start to peel back the mitigations, you know? There is the possibility that come the 17th, is it 17th? Yeah, 17th, 17th, that, um, the, um, appeal fails, and, but again, I think the, out of that ruling will come some greater clarity, because I think the courts are also recognizing, you know, the outcome of this most recent ruling, right? That there, it's, it's murky, and it's not clean, and, you know, it's creating a lot of animosity within communities, which is never, never healthy. So I think there will be greater, greater clarity that comes out of that. So either way, I think the 17th will provide better direction. And then, so if the board wants to have a, you know, again, a special meeting next week to kind of, you know, I can share what I've heard from the Page County Health Department, we can start having those discussions about what our path looks like, and then that way we're, we're better prepared for, you know, either scenario. And then the 22nd, um, you know, depending upon what happens on the 17th to 22nd, then, you know, the board could be, you know, approving that plan, you know? But that could be one way to go.
So, um, I think there's no harm in setting up a special meeting, or at least getting everybody's input on a special meeting for next week. One thing that sticks out to me is that while we're in a different spot in the pandemic, the, um, trajectory repeated itself near perfectly year over year with a spike post Christmas, and, um, and then just as we were starting to talk about, like, oh, we're going to get back to school, and, and, and there was some jumping of the gun, and spring break hit, and we spiked again. And so I just, I'm concerned about kind of jumping the gun to an extent, because history has said that the trajectory has repeated itself, even though less severe, it continued to repeat itself. But, um, but learning also, and I, I don't think that we had enough shorter special meetings last year. And so I think it is in our benefit, and most importantly, the school community's benefit, you know, to be able to be a little bit quicker on some of this stuff and be prepared to. So, so if we were to, you know, figure out if we could have a special meeting next week, the 17th or later, you know, so that we know at least we're going to have some information from the appellate court, maybe some information from the DuPage Health Department, we can discuss that, and then we could have an action item, if we decided that, um, there was an action item to be had on the 22nd agenda, instead of the potential for discussing that information on the 22nd. And then because we can't, just like tonight, we're not voting on anything tonight, because we cannot, because it's not an action item. So there's nothing that we're voting on tonight, this is a discussion. If we were to decide that there was something to vote on tonight, we would have to put that on the 22nd's agenda. So my point being, I'd rather not have another discussion on the 22nd, and then do another special meeting to make a decision if there's a decision to be made, or wait till the next meeting. I'd rather kind of like spend some time next week, and then have a potential action item on the 22nd, sooner rather than later. And whether that is ideally putting together an exit plan of this layer comes off, and let's see what happens, and this layer comes off, and let's see what happens, but doing it in a measured way, uh, so that we are protecting everybody's health and well-being, our staff and our students, um, you know, just, yeah. So that's my, that's my, my take on it, is, is I think that we can learn from, from this piece of history, that we weren't super great on that. Last year, having emergency meetings and then being able to take an act, action a little bit quicker, but also that the histories, the history is there of, if we jump the gun on this, we might, we, we see spikes again, and we don't, we don't want to go backwards.
Yeah. Lea, I think, I think that, that the idea of having an emergency meeting that is proactive instead of reactive is a great idea.
I agree. I'm very open to a special meeting next week for that.
Cool.
I agree.
Um, can I say one more thing, just not really about anything on here, but Kevin, you made, you made a comment about the consequences of just this announcement in this case and all of that, and you, in, in that you mentioned the amount of animosity that it's creating, and, um, you know, we all, we've heard about bullying, you're an administrator, as many of you know, I'm an administrator, and the, talking about bullying, the, the bullying and the unkind words that adults have been directing towards other adults is one of the poorest models of behavior for our children that I have ever seen as an adult, and I'm appalled by it. And I would just implore the community, no matter how, and I, this board, we don't all agree eye to eye on everything, and yet we find a respectful way to talk to one another. It is civil discourse, it is one of the most important things, and we have got to do better at that. That's all, that's all I want to say about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so to wrap up, we want to set up
Do we want to set up a special board meeting right now?
I want to make sure that we kind of, you know, wrap this up as neat as it can get. So we're gonna, are we going to plan for a special meeting on the 17th? Are we going to send out a poll for like, I don't know, what day of the week is the 17th?
17th is a Thursday, that leaves Thursday, Friday, Monday before the next board meeting and the weekend.
I think we go from, we set up a poll, we won't have it today, but we set up a poll about meeting times.
The agenda for the next board meeting would have to be up on the Friday, so we'd have to have that meeting, either Thursday or Friday?
Mm-hmm.
Although potential for, I mean, do we want to see if anybody has time on a Wednesday in case the verdict comes out earlier than expected, just to get some more potential time in?
I, I think we do have to, you know, allow board members to look at their schedules and see what's available, and have that as an option, and, and
I can send out a doodle poll and see what works for everybody. The, the 17th is a real tight timeline with having a meeting on the 22nd, I will tell you that. So if a day prior to 17th, you know, would probably work better.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I agree with that, potentially doing it on Wednesday, I'm just concerned if we were to set a meeting and then the verdict doesn't come out, and we don't, but
Here's the thing, right? If the ruling is, if the appellate ruling is that, um, the, you know, puts a stay on the temporary restraining order, you know, we're, we won't be able to roll back the masks.
Mm-hmm.
All right? Uh, and, and so that Tuesday meeting, we won't be, um, you know, we, we can still approve a plan for, you know, when the governor, you know, um, starts to roll back his executive But it, you know, and if, if on the 17th, the ruling is that, you know, no, this TRO is in place, and again, there's greater clarity, we'll have our plan so that we can start going.
I, I, I think we're at a point now, and I've said it before, being proactive is important. I don't want to waste the board's time, but I do think we're at a point now that we are all eager to, to remove the layers, literally and figuratively, um, in a measured way, and that we're at a point where we need to create that plan, so that when we do have the clearance to kind of kick it off, it's already made and, and ready to go, or at least minorly tweakable.
Yeah, I think we should schedule tentatively, right? And get the, get the, do the poll that we need to do, but tentatively for next Wednesday, right? And if we don't have the decision, that, that's not the only thing we're talking about. It's not just this decision.
It's not the only thing, yeah.
There's much more, there's much more to talk about.
Right, right.
And this is about, this is about that. So if, if on top of that, we have the decision, then so much more information that we have to, to, to deal with.
You're saying meet before the appellate decision comes out?
We don't know when the decision's going to come out.
Well, the decision will come out no later than the 17th.
No later than the 17th.
Yeah, no later, right, exactly.
So it's not, it's not scheduled for the 17th, it is no later than, and to Kevin's point
So it could come out earlier, you know, but I think, I think the appeals were filed, well, the, the appeals, the, to file an appeal, they had until the end of the day Tuesday, today. Uh, I think many of the appeals are filed Monday. So then, the, um, you know, Wednesday, Thursday are for the counter arguments, the appeals have to be filed, filed. And then it starts the five days. So Friday's day one, then you got Tuesday, Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and that's what brings us to the fifth day, the 17th. So there could be a ruling on Friday. I hardly, I don't think that will happen, unless it'll be at 5 o'clock on Friday, which is always fun. But probably sometime during next week with, it has to be by the 17th.
Okay.
Yeah, it's no earlier than Friday, no later than Thursday, but
Right, right.
That's how, that's how it goes. So I, I think we have to keep the conversation going amongst ourselves. I think we have to, um, continue to work on everything that Lea said, I won't reiterate it. And, and so if, if we have information from this appeal on Wednesday, great, and if we don't, we continue the conversation, and we'll consider the information from the appeal at the next board meeting.
So we're saying the goal is a meeting on the 16th, but we still have to do a poll to see
The goal is the 16th.
And do we have form, basically.
Correct, whatever, availability. And, you know?
Let me just ask this, are we comfortable, if we can get a board majority on a date, are we comfortable going forward with a meeting? Or do we feel like we have to have all seven?
We're only missing one person's opinion on that tonight, so I, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it personally.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
So are we okay, like if
Yeah, hypothetically, the best we can do is six on one night. You know, we can't get all seven, but we can get six, or we can get five, or, you know, that's the best we can do. Are the five, are, is the board willing to go forward with a meeting, knowing that a couple of members or one member may not be able to? It just doesn't fit their calendar.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, I have a clarifying question for you to ask Jeff, potentially. We, we have, as, as we've mentioned a couple of times tonight, we had already made a decision to follow the recommendations that were out there for masking prior to the judges, or not prior to the judges, prior to Governor Pritzker's order, I think it was like the day before, but, but we had already made that decision. And there's some confusion around the judge's kind of footnotes around of her, of her TRO, in that the footnotes call out that each school district has the ability to govern itself. And so that piece of the school districts having the ability to govern themselves, is that, is that part of the reason why we had already made that decision? And so kind of our, that's almost our backup, not our backup, but if the governor's order hadn't been there
That's our stance.
The stance already was to follow guidelines. So can you ask Jeff for clarity around that? How that kind of footnote around, um, allowing the, the districts to govern themselves specifically applies to the decision that we had already made prior to the governor's order?
Right.
Thank you.
So not to restate everything, I just want to ask if you're clear.
Yes, yes, I'll say, I'll do a poll, see what day works next week for the board majority, and then I will be working with the Page County Health Department, getting in any information when they're in, if they are anticipating coming up with, um, some, you know, guidance on repealing the mitigations.
Or just updated Or just updated guidelines in general.
Right.
Awesome.
Any other comments from the board? We'll move on to the number three, 2022-2023 school year.
And actually, we're going to table this. The events kind of pulled my efforts, but basically, it's kind of, you know, sharing with our community the plans for next year for 22-23 school year, update on the shared plan, and getting into some of those metrics that, you know, for how we're going to measure the success of our grade level centers, so.
So that's on the agenda for the announcement and what everything is going.
Right.
It was supposed to be today.
Right.
So, okay, thank you.
Real quick question, Kevin, I'm sorry, this is kind of tied to this year, I suppose. The emergency day that we took last week was a half day.
Yes.
Was that only a half day in Miller and Manning, or was that a half day district-wide? And so does that mean the, the day after?
It was a SIP day district-wide.
Okay.
We do have to make up the day because we took a traditional emergency day. And to get to your other question, the board did have the hearing at our last board meeting to heavy learning days. The, included in my parent update was notification that we are going to be going to e-learning days, and so February 28th would be the first official e-learning day we would have. And if we have any learning day sometime in March, again, we would only have one, get feedback from our parents, our staff, and look at that feedback and seeing going forward if we're comfortable with e-learning days. But, and even if we had a, a weather event that was two days in a row, we want to go back-to-back e-learning, we wouldn't go e-learning emergency day in order to be able to process that.
So that, that was kind of the 30-day notice, so that absolutely no earlier than February 28th, would we be taking a remote day instead of a snow day?
Right.
And that our intention is to take one remote day to gather feedback and then make a further decision.
Right.
But we have no intention of taking multiples.
Right.
Thank you for that clarity, I appreciate it.
Sure.
If there are no other questions, we'll move to the superintendent's report.
So only one item I superintendent report, we already touched base on this, Leah, that February 2nd was an emergency day, and the district will be adding a date to the end of the school calendar. So right now, the last day of school will be May 31st, if we don't use any more days. In terms of the SIP day, the makeup day does not have to be a SIP day. And just in talking to the principals, they don't know if, how effective a SIP day would be as the last day of school, you know, in terms of how focused staff would be. So it'll probably be, originally, the last day of school was going to be an early release. So the second to last day of school now, I can't, you know, I'd have to backtrack and remember what date that was.
27.
The 27th?
27.
So the 27th will now just be a traditional full day, and then the 31st will be an early release day, so, but not a SIP day.
And question with, is there the, the work that was to be done by the teachers and administrators? Is that made up?
The, the, teachers are, are doing that staff development, they are still going to be doing that staff development, but we're not going to wait till the end of the year on a SIP day to do it.
They find other days.
So we'll do it as part of the PLCs.
Okay.
And that's my report.
Any other questions? We'll move along to board reports.
Okay, I've got board reports. I'm, I'm going to try not to take too much time, but, so, in the interest of cross-training and everybody learning and understanding kind of how, how all of us work, so as, as you guys know, I serve on the SACID board. Because SACID is a co-op, and because of how it's, it's, it's governed and created, it works a little bit differently than us, so there's actually two boards for SACID. There's the governing board, which is made up of exclusively school board members, and then there is the board of control, which is made up of a mixture of superintendents, business officers, and school board members. So, Wesmont is on both of those boards, the school board member is on both of those boards, lucky Mr. Carey. And that governing board meets a couple times a year, and it's typically a joint meeting with the board of control. And that's actually what happened just last week. So that kind of January meeting is typically pretty large, it's a lot of stuff, it's, it's budget approval, it's that kind of stuff. So there was a lot of stuff, and some things will affect us in the coming years for SACID, and I wanted to kind of keep everybody abreast of all of that. So just like we had to have a public hearing for e-learning, we had a public hearing as well for SACID for e-learning, and the reason that they had that was because some of their member districts have, have, have e-learning. And so not that SACID will be e-learning if we are not, but it'll, that allows SACID to follow whatever districts they're in, in whatever they are doing. So if we have an e-learning day, then the SACID team that services our district will, will be working and having an e-learning day. So it's just to, it's to mirror, that's what SACID tries to do when they are in district. So we had that public hearing, and they didn't have a specific e-learning program besides following the programs that were in place in the different, in the different districts. There was a, a audit presentation, which, which is, takes up a lot of stuff, and I'm on the, the finance committee for SACID too, because school finance is rather interesting. It's fascinating. But SACID has had three central business officers in, in two years. And I'm sure, as Kim can imagine, and we can all imagine, switching up the head of your business office three times in two years can be.
Chaotic.
Discombobulating, and their current business officer is here for the long run, he's their permanent, they had an interim, da-da-da, all of that stuff, right? He's trying to get kind of a handle on stuff, and he's found the, the organization of how SACID does things in timeline is a little bit backwards. And, but, but what he's also found, and this was part of the audit, was that there's a significant fund balance that SACID holds that, that he's working on. So, long story short, the, the audit, SACID used a new auditing group as part of just an opportunity to have some new eyes on the books. SACID doesn't have a fund balance policy, which was recommended that they put a fund balance policy in place. And then SACID also doesn't have a capital asset policy, so what they do with their assets, SACID doesn't have a ton of big assets because they don't, they don't operate the schools in the same way. But, so, those were two things that are going to, that are going to be in place, and that SACID's going to work with the accounting firm to put into place, which rolls into the fiscal year '23 budget and the fiscal year '22. So SACID had to amend its fiscal year '22 budget, an increase of about, they're, they're saying between two and a half and three and a half percent in costs or tuition from the districts. And that has a lot to do with the same things that we're all dealing with, right? Rise in transportation costs, the teacher shortage is severe, SACID has been 28-plus people short for nine months. That hasn't changed. They'll hire people on and, and lose them. So they're, they're struggling in the same way, in the same spots, and because of that, they've had to have a lot of contract nurses, which are much more expensive than having a full-time nurse. So all of that is building into that. But then also, it's kind of building into the budgets not being super clear, and the new finance officer trying to get a real good handle on it. For '22-23 and '23-24, SACID is actively working on how it's going to return what is a very large fund balance to its member districts through some changes in how it, how it charges for, for student tuition. The tuition system is real confusing and changes, and it's a guesstimate, and then it comes back, da-da-da-da-da. And, long story short, they're trying to, they're going to try to go to a more set tuition rate per year, and the anticipation is that in those years, a lot of that money will get returned back to the districts then. So while in the short term, they are expecting a two and a half to three and a half percent increase in tuition, in really the two, three, and four-year term, we'll see, we'll see a lot of that come back, and come back to the districts in a simplification in how SACID works. So SACID's super excited about that, and we should be excited about it, it's very exciting school finance stuff. They have a consent agenda, just like we do, although they have, it's massive, it's real big, they have to approve a lot of things. They are also updating their policies, just like we work on every year, we, we update policies and make sure that they're, that they're still correct, still effective, so we approved a whole bunch of policies. We also discussed the executive director's evaluation process, which happens every year. Enrollment for SACID has been steady to just a little touchdown, but they typically see a bump at this time of year, and they're trying to balance out, SACID has member districts, but then it also serves outside the member districts. So SACID is getting a lot of requests for services from, from schools outside the member districts, and SACID's number one goal is to serve the member districts, and so it's trying to balance taking those kids in, but then also making sure that it always has spots open for its member district kiddos. And so they typically see a little bit of a spike at this time of year. So while enrollment is a little bit static, and it's been a little bit erratic over the last two years, for all of these reasons, it's, that's kind of what's going on there. Board committees, Wesmont serves on the tuition, or on the finance board, and there's also a policy board committee, I should say. And then we just kind of discussed the extended school year for the students, the e-learning resolution, the, we had a COVID-19 pandemic resolution, which allowed the executive director to take quicker action. We only meet once a month, so if you can imagine, that would be real hard if you can't take action until you get approval, so we extended that. And I think, I think that is about it. The next meeting is in a couple of weeks, and that's just a board of control meeting, so I will have updates for you guys, but it won't be this big. But yeah, any questions about SACID, how it works?
I've got a question.
Yeah.
So because it has budgetary implications for our district, and apart from your report out, is, is there some formal communication about this change in the tuition that goes to the business office, our business office? Is that something that?
When it, when it becomes official, yes. It's anticipated, and this is part of it, is that by putting it to the governing board as something that the finance team and the finance committee is working on, they've kind of started that process of, and, and when it becomes official, and they've actually figured out what that tuition is going to be, yes.
Is any of this surprising, Kim?
I haven't looked at their fund balance, we wouldn't really be looking at that, but their tuition, you know, it changes, and it, and it really changes for us based on the number of kids enrolled, so we'll just, I mean, I'll make sure that we have notes in there to kind of watch that, and a lot of that, we run through our IDEA grants, so that'll be something that a new person will need to be aware of, that there may be other types of spending then, if we don't spend as much, don't have, our tuition bills aren't as large, so there may be more money for the IDEA grant to do other things with, so.
Got it.
Yeah, and really, the biggest like outcome that, that SACID would like to see is that the tuition becomes easier for the districts to be able to plan for, right? If you send a kid to a SACID school, you know their tuition is going to be X number of dollars, and it's not, and currently, that's not how it works. Currently, it's like, we think it might be this much, but then once it actually happens, and it goes back and forth, and it, it ties into why their budget runs real backwards, and it ties into a lot of other things. And really, most importantly, or a huge piece of it, is that it just ties into a lot of paperwork that, that people at the district offices and at this SACID office are trying to figure out, and, and we got to simplify that process.
Got it.
So it's real, and it's ended up, I mean, there's, their fund balances, it's a very large fund balance.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And the way that it's set up, they shouldn't need to hold a fund balance, because if they needed more money, they would go to the member districts. So the member districts hold a fund balance, that's part of the reason they hold it, is also to support SACID if it, if it were to need it, but, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Leah, thank you for being a wonderful representative of the first SACID, we appreciate you.
For sure, for sure.
It has been a very interesting board to be on. Cool, that's my board report. And then I am going to ask for an agenda item on that 22nd, not, not the special board meeting, but for us to start talking about, I went to a ISB, is that right?
Webinar.
Webinar. Spent the morning talking about kind of preparing for your next bargaining session, and we've got one coming up in the next 12 months, and it's never too early to prepare. And so I'm going to ask for a discussion item on the 22nd agenda, so I can kind of report out on what I learned, but then also so that we can discuss and start thinking about our next steps, because we need to start thinking about our next steps quickly, so.
Thank you. Other board reports?
I've, I've two. I am currently, and it's my last year, being a chair for the community ambassadors over at Manning, previously known to other parents in the district as the parent reps, we changed the name. But yes, I'm just reaching out to everyone in the district. I've come to find out that South School doesn't seem to get the same love that we're giving all our teachers at the other schools, so in the act of community, I'm collecting treats to stock their lounge. I've already been gifted a Karig for them.
Ooh.
But yes, so if anybody wants to reach out to me, we're just collecting any kind of snacks, there are some gluten-free, dairy-free teachers and staff there, but we're going to, for Valentine's Day, I'm going to drop off a bunch of stuff for them.
There's a signup genius for that.
There is a signup genius, I, I shared it on my post on the D201 friends, otherwise, come find me, I mean, everybody in town knows who I am, I believe by now. So yeah. And then the other thing is, still looking for PR members for the PR committee. If you have any desire or want to find out, sit in on a meeting, reach out to Amy Quatron at the junior high. So yeah, because we're going to have another one of those meetings coming up soon, so, thanks.
Thank you. Any other reports? I want to move back to public comment. I do have a few that, cards, and I'll ask for more if there are more cards.
I did want to just mention, if you.
And say your name.
I just wanted to mention that if anybody wanted the links to the references that I cited when I was up here speaking, I'd be more than willing to send them to you. Like I said, all of them were pulled from the CDC except for the one study regarding the, the cleanliness of masks and how Americans use them. That study, I do understand, might not, probably has been contested since that one, but I think in general, we all kind of understood what the sentiment behind that piece was, so I'll make sure I provide them to you, I think we have your email address, so. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we have Dan? Gina? Barelli?
I'd like to make a public comment, please.
I just, I want to make sure I just have the names that, and I can't, Matt? Is it Matt?
Matt.
Matt Curran.
Matt Curran?
Okay, I just want to give them an opportunity, you can step to the podium.
Does he have a card?
Do you have a, do you have a card, or did you write one out?
No, I don't.
Just when you're done, if you can do that.
Sure.
Just state your name.
Good evening, my name's George Wilson, I've got two kids in the district. I was disappointed when I read your email on Sunday, Mr. Carey, but not surprised. The judge ruled that the governor, the ISBE, the IDPH, and the schools do not have the authority to mandate masks in the 150-odd school districts named in the lawsuit. We may not be named in the lawsuit, but that in no way diminishes the illegality of the same mandate that you are enforcing. An unlawful mandate is an unlawful mandate. It's that simple, but if you still don't get it, then we can join the lawsuit too. It's quite easy to add our names on. The judge's ruling is the law. I understand there is an appeal, but nonetheless, it is still currently the law in Illinois. You're currently breaking the law. You are currently breaking the law. Every day, every student in the district is having their civil rights violated because you are forcing them to wear a mask. And what are the children supposed to learn from your behavior? Certainly not to respect the law. How will that set them up in life? There are some important lessons that you are teaching our kids. Pick and choose which laws you like, and ignore those which you don't like, right? When should we submit to the law? Suit yourself. Just put your foot down when the police try to pull you over. What could possibly go wrong? You're setting such a great example for our kids. When the mandate started, what if I had sent my kids to school without masks and a note saying, "I was considering the mandate, and will get back to you in a couple of weeks"? You would have sent my children home. You expect me to operate within your rules. I expect you to operate within the law. And what of the lawyers that got us into this mess? Tell me. Did they ever warn you that the mandate was illegal, or warn you that it could be overturned? If they did, that looks bad for you. If they didn't, then they are incompetent and need to be replaced immediately. I made a mistake trusting you with my children, Mr. Carey. That's what really stings. I made that mistake. I trusted the school board to have my kids' best interests at heart, but you've just turned out to be a rubber stamp for the administration, which is really disappointing. Your mask mandate is illegal. You have lost. The appeal may or may not give you a stay of education, of execution, but you have lost. The states around us have moved on, the world has moved on. Good night.
Any other public comment? Okay, move along to future meetings and events. Westmont Junior High School PTO meeting, February 9th, 2022, 7:00 PM, and that will be at the junior high. Westmont High School Incoming Ninth Grader Night, February 17th, 2022, at 6:30 at Westmont High School. And then, right now, our next scheduled CUSD 201 board meeting is February 22nd, 2022, Tuesday, at 6:00, Westmont, the Witch Hall. Now we move to motion, if, there's no reason to go to closed session?
No.
The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the February 8th, 2022, regular meeting of the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second. Is everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?